Bottom of the page. If nothing, no recommendation is made within seventy-one days, the issue before the zoning commission is denied? Is that what that says?
Yes, sir.
So it seems to be possible for the zoning commission not to just call a meeting for seventy-one days if they wanted to have something denied? Is that true? Or am I looking at it wrong?
Ask me that last question part again?
It said, based on this seventy-one day requirement, if the zoning commissioners did not want an issue to be confirmed, in other words, they would want it denied, could they just go to seventy-two days and not hold a meeting? And it would automatically be denied?
If a, if a application comes in, the stat, the ordinance says, when the application comes in, you'll have seventy-one days in which to make a decision. If in the time that you, during that period of time, you don't make a decision, then it will be overruled by operational law, or denied by operational law. And that can occur several different ways. One is y'all don't meet. Y'all just can't get a quorum together in seventy-one days. The other is y'all meet and you're, you're, you're stuck on two-two, you know, or three to three. There's just nothing that's occurring. Y'all haven't approved it, y'all haven't denied it. But if nothing happens, then uh, if, or y'all just don't have a meeting, y'all don't have a meeting, then it is automatically denied. And the denial is what's, is what's then reported to the city council.
So at that point, let's assume that this goes on and, and on seventy-two days, we haven't made a recommendation. What's the uh, path of the applicant at that point?
It'll, it'll go to the city council for final decision.
As a den- as a denial?
As a denial.
Does it have a special uh, term attached to it based on the seventy-one day requirement?
What the, what your ordinance says is that there'd be a special, a final report is sent to the city council with your decision. Okay? And I, and, and the, and, and I'm not actually, uh, I've never seen that happen here where there's been seventy-one days. But I can assume, I would assume, that just the notation that it came in this date.
You have to-
Seventy-one days has expired. It's a denial by, by operational laws.
You have to validate the, the situation is what happened, right?
Right.
Well, I've never seen this before. Is this something that's come in in the last three or four years? I've never seen this before.
I don't know the answer to that. Uh, I've only, I've, I've only suppo- uh, been here for a year. In the year that I've been here, it's not happened. Councilman, do you know if that's ever happened? No.
What was the question?
If of the seventy-one days, has, has there ever been a case where the city has not made a decision in seventy-one days?
No, my question was, is this item new to our zoning requirements? I have never seen it before.
No, it's actually in, it's, it's, it's in the zoning code. It's in the, it's in chapter fifteen.
It's not new.
It's not new?
Well, since the last time you've been on the zoning commission, how long ago was that?
Uh, twenty thirteen, I think, or fourteen, fifteen or something?
Probably since then, yes. There's been some new shop clerk requirements.
Oh, I, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that was a question.
Thank you.
Uh, yes.
Thank you, sir.
I, I don't know, I don't know the history of when that, of when that was. Was someone else gonna ask a question?
Um, yeah, because um, just recently, we were discussing um, the revision of um, uh, was it chapter fifteen? And it went on for a long time. Sometimes it was presented to us as um, it was a discussion. And then other times it was, uh, it was, I was trying to remember whether it was, the way it was presented to us. It was gonna be a discussion, not a recommendation. And then, cause I know we met several meetings um, until it became a recommendation. Um, so, so that's kinda tricky then, how we have to pay attention if it's being presented to us as equal, a discussion? Or whether they're asking us to make a recommendation, right?
Right, I mean, the, the, yes, ma'am. I mean, if it's just a discussion, obviously you can't vote on that, on, on that during that meeting.
Okay.
But um-
So what I'm saying, the clock isn't ticking. It's not part of the seventy-two days?
The-
That's for applicants.
That's right. And, and councilman is absolutely right. What this is intended to do is if there's an application for a rezone, okay?
Okay.
Or a special use permit or something like that.
Okay.
If, if you get that, that's where the seventy-one days really comes in, 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 into it. If the city council has asked y'all to take a look at a particular section to redo it.
Yeah.
Then, I mean, there's no, there's no seventy-one day.
Okay.
Period. It's, it's, it's to act on applications that are coming in.
Okay.
So that the public is not just left hanging for ever. You know, and y'all just aren't making a decision. Did you wanna add something, councilman?
You, you asked him, you asked him first.
And I, I do wanna, I do wanna, I don't wanna leave this page without, without saying that a failed motion is not a recommendation. Okay? So just remember, if someone says, I move to approve second and the motion fails, that does not then get reported to the council as an approval or a denial. Okay? There has to be an affirmative approval or an affirmative denial in order for their, for that report to go to council as the recommendation from it. So you have to have the magic words, I move to approve, blah, 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 blah. Or I move to deny, blah, 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 blah. With an affirmative vote of a majority of the council, of, of the commission that's present. Okay?
Is it appropriate if um, if someone moves to approve and it's seconded and it doesn't pass? Is the appropriate thing to do to say, let's discuss this? And then someone calls for the motion to deny and then?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, yes, the further discussion can be, you know, and you may wanna, and there may be even new facts that are, you know, or may, new opinions or new whatever that y'all may wanna think about or it's, or, or y'all may wanna move it to the next meeting for consideration or something like that. Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm confused. As she said, your motion was made for approval and it was denied. Well, isn't that the motion? How do you bring that back up for discussion in the same meeting?
Well, I think what she meant was, a motion was made for approval and it didn't pass.
Right, right, okay. Isn't that the end of the discussion? So how do you bring it back up in that same meeting? If it's been denied?
Another party could, another party could make a motion to deny.
We could make a different motion.
Yes, ma'am.
So the chair doesn't say this motion has been denied, you know? So it'll go on the, on the-
It, it will say that the motion failed.
Motion failed.
Right. And then, and you're still on that item, okay? Another party could make a motion to deny at that point. Or the, another party could then make a motion to delay or, you know, move to a specific date or something along those lines. There's still other, you don't get just one motion per item. Okay, that's not, that's not it. Now, the, the, the item, the item is still being considered until you move, until the chair has moved from that item to another item.
But just to clarify, a failed motion is not a deny, correct?
That's correct. So if you, let me, let me say it this way. If you move to approve and it doesn't pass, it's not a denial. If you move to deny and that doesn't pass, that does not mean approval. Okay? That, that just means that the motion's failed. Does that make sense?
I'm confused.
All right, let's, let's clear this up, cause this is an important point.
Yes, it makes, I'd like to say, if I, if I may, it makes sense to me that if someone makes a motion to approve and they don't get the vote, then whoever's running the meeting can say, the motion to approve has failed. We can table it, we can discuss it. We can talk about it at the next meeting. And then some other person bravely says, well, I make the motion to deny. And then it could pass or it could fail. And it's still not a recommendation to the city council until we all vote on a mo- or we pass a motion to approve or we pass a motion to deny. And then it goes to city council.
Right, so you need, what council needs is an affirmative vote from y'all. Either of, an affirmative vote to approve a rezone or an affirmative vote to deny. Okay? But a failed motion is not an affirmative action. Okay? It is merely an action, but without a recommendation. The recommendation is, I recommend we approve and a majority of y'all have approved it. Or I make a recommendation to deny and a majority of y'all have, have denied it. Yes, ma'am.
So is it, so is it um, only the chairman that can make the next motion to um, table or have more discussion?
Anybody can make a motion. Yes, ma'am.
Also, if, if um, if there is a denial, like if we, if we vote and there's a denial, can, could that come, become part of the notes?
Yes, I mean, that, that should be part of, that should be part of the final report. And do you, do you wanna talk what's in the reports that goes to council? Or do you wanna, I mean, is it just basically the application? And then a summary of what happens here?
Yes, the reaction.
Is, is what's, is what's forwarded to the city council? So.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I don't get it. If the vote is, is the, if a motion is to approve and it's denied, the next motion is denied and it's denied, where do we go?
You, you either continue to discuss until there's a, until, until there's a motion to approve.
It has to be resolved before we make a motion, I mean, before it goes as a recommendation.
Or you can make a motion to place on a future agenda.
Okay.
To table.
Is there some re- some requirement still that you have to send a positive motion to the council? You can't, in other words, you have to, you have to make a motion to approve and then it's approved or denied? You can't just make a motion to deny and it's approved? That's a negative motion going to the council.
Right.
Is that, is that still in our rules?
You can, so the, the motion can be, I approve? Motion to approve?
Uh huh.
Or motion to deny. Okay?
Can both of them?
If y'all can't make any, and if, again, the catch-all comes in. If y'all can't ever make a decision on it, the catch-all is, after seventy-one days, it's automatically denied. Okay? Um, that applica- that, that application is automatically denied.
So a motion can actually be, um, I make a motion that we deny this? That can actually be-
Absolutely.
Okay, cause I've never heard that one, I've been up here.
Absolutely.
Okay. So if I may give you an example, let's say all seven voting members are here. And somebody makes a motion to approve something. Three people approve, four people deny. At that point, one of the people that denied it says, do they ask the chairperson, I'd like to change this to, I'd like to move to deny this approval? Or how does that work?
They would just make a motion to say, so generally what would happen? And, and you're absolutely right. So I move to approve, three yeses, four nos. Okay? The chair might say, are there any other motions? Someone says, I make a motion to deny, or I move to deny. Then there's a vote.
And then there's four that deny it and there's three that approve it, so that's a passed denial.
That's, then it's the right, that, that, now you have a recommendation to council of denial.
Got it. I think what uh, might trip people up is making a motion to approve, making a motion to deny, and then using that same language, approve and deny, for the vote. It either passed or it didn't pass.
That's correct.
And if it passed-
Right.
Then it moves forward. And if it didn't pass, you can make a different motion or you can table it.
And, and we, and, and you're absolutely right. You don't wanna get tripped up on language here, right? And just to be clear, you're, you're making a motion to approve the rezoning request. We'll just say, we'll just call it a rezoning or, we'll just call it rezoning for now. You can make a motion to approve the rezoning. And that motion will either be, will either pass or fail. Okay? Not, let's not use approved or denied. Okay? I make a motion, I move to approve. The motion passes or fails. I make a motion to deny. That motion will either pass or fail. Does that make it easier?
Yes.
Uh, so uh, yeah, I, if we say approve, approve, and approve on a denial, I mean, I, it's confusing. But a, but a motion is either gonna pass or fail.
And um, what would be the-
Or be tied, which means it's not, right, which, which part be tabled?
And-
I think I saw your hand go first.
Well, okay. So if you've made a motion to approve and the vote isn't, is negative and it's not approved, why would you wanna make a motion to deny it and go through the same process again? You've already, you did, you denied the motion.
The motion's denied. If the motion's denied, the ordinance, your ordinance says that that's not a recommendation of the city council. Okay?
A yes and no on a vote, it's not a recommendation of the council?
Only an affirmative vote is a recommendation.
Okay, if you made a motion to approve the zoning case and it failed, then that, then that, why would you go to the opposite and make motion to deny it and vote on it again? It's just failed.
Because the, the, the motion to approve did not pass.
Right.
Okay? That doesn't necessarily, that the motion to deny passed either. Someone, someone may have a reason to not wanna deny it. I don't know.
What are you accomplishing by doing the same thing again in reverse?
Uh, I've been, what I will tell you is this. Is your ordinance requires an affirmative vote to make a recommendation.
So if you ask for a negative motion, that's not affirm- so an affirmative vote or a negative motion is, is approval?
Yeah, you're affirming the negative.
You're saying that it's, it's almost like-
Okay, but you just denied, you just, you just denied approval.
But that wasn't a- Your point, your point is, is clear. And I think it's just the way that the law is written and interpreted.
Let me read you your ordinance.
Okay, sir.
Let me read you the ordinance.
Thank you.
A motion which is defeated is not a recommendation. If a motion is defeated, another motion must be made, seconded and voted upon and approved by a majority of the commission present and voting. So the council has told y'all clearly, if you don't approve it, then that's, that's not a recommendation. You have to tell us you want it denied.
Okay.
I, I think what it comes down to is the fact that a failed motion is not a recommendation, period.
That's right.
Okay.
We've had it on council where um, an item will come before us and one of the council members will make a motion and it fails. Then the mayor will say, is there any further discussion or anybody wanna make another motion? And we'll make another motion and it'll either pass or fail. So that's, it's happened at, at the council level too.
Right. And, and generally that's because, and, and there are times that it fails because you just don't have enough information or you don't, at that particular time, similar because you didn't vote for something, doesn't mean you're against it. Right? I mean, it, it, it may mean you need more time. It may mean you need more investigation. It may mean you have a question for staff. Staff, would you please go and do, do this for us and bring us back at the next meeting, et cetera, et cetera? So I, so I think, so that's where, you know, I guess I, just, just to be clear, um, I think that's where council's going with this. I didn't draft this for council, but I, but, but I can imagine this is what they're, they're thinking. Is that just because some, you, just because you vote against something, doesn't necessarily mean that that's your final decision on it. You may just, you may just need additional information on it. Ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to go back a little bit to that a failed motion can be part of the notes. Can, does any one of us suggest that to, it be made part of the notes? Or what's the process for that?
Uh, can you, can you move your mic down? I wanna, I'm not sure I heard your question entirely.
I wanted to go back to that a failed motion can be part of the notes. So the process for that is that um, as a commissioner, we can just um, um, make a, state that we would like to have that motion as part of the notes?
Right, uh, do you wanna speak to what the, what?
Your understanding with, that our minutes are just action minutes? I'm not sure if, uh, do we need to include failed motions or?
So it, it's completely up to the commission. So normally when we take action minutes, um, we just put the motion that was made in the motion that's passed. That's the whole idea of having action minutes. But if the commission wants to include failed motions, we can certainly, like, we can certainly do that. That's not, it's not unheard of. Um, and so if that's something y'all wanna collectively do or if there's this particular contentious item, and sometimes y'all, you will have multiple motions that fail cause we're not getting it just right or not including maybe the language just right. And so you may have multiple motions that fail on, I'm just gonna say contentious item, uh, cause normally that's when it happens. You can certainly um, make sure whoever's making the motion turn and tell the staff, can you make sure these failed motions are in the minutes? And so they can put them in the minutes. And then when y'all come, y'all can, y'all will vote collectively on the minutes. And if at any point, the commission, as you know, cause you vote on the minutes, say y'all don't want the most, you, you would ask them to strike that from the minutes and then y'all would vote on that as a collective body. But if at any point in a meeting, there's something particular that you would like addressed in the minutes, now I'm not doing transcribed minutes, we're way past that. We have video recording of all of our meetings. So we try to stick to action minutes. But at any time, any of the commissioners feel like it's an, there's something important that was said in a meeting, you can always ask the staff if they could please make note of that in the minutes. And we'll be happy to do so.
I, I just mentioned this cause one of the trainings I went to, uh, one of the lawyers stated that it really benefits the commission to do things like that. So sometimes if it is contentious or there was a, a series of failed um, motions, then it kinda gives more information to the council as to why that was occurring. Whether, what were the sticking points or, like, maybe there wasn't enough information or something.
Yes, and so whatever it is that you feel is pertinent to provide that information to council. Now, I will tell you, some of the council members read your minutes, some don't read your minutes. Some are waiting for the directors to provide y'all's recommendation. And most of the time when we come up and give the recommendation, we'll, we'll let them know it was a three to two split. Um, there was some discussion about X, Y, Z. We'll put in that bank. And it is customary, for as long as I have been here, for the chair of this commission, anytime y'all give a recommendation to attend the council meeting and provide the insight from the commission's point of view. That has been, for as long as I have been here, Casey, before, sorry, Casey. Her name is slipping me, Rouse, Ms. Rouse. And then before Ms. Rouse was somebody, and we have, I have always, for, for twenty years that I have been here, the zoning commission chair almost always came or always sent somebody in their stead to, to speak on behalf of the zoning commission. So um, I know I've seen Mr. Montha here. Um, we, I mean, we've been out for Christmas, but, and he's come up a couple of times to speak on the zoning commission instead. But just know, the zoning commission is always welcome to attend the council meeting and always welcome to come and speak at a council meeting and express like what they, their thoughts were at the zoning commission um, to express whatever you want to express to the council as well.
All right? Are we good on this page? All right? So the contents of your motion for like a district change, to go from R one to R, or whatever, multifamily or something like that. You want, you wanna make your recommendation on approval or denial? And this comes right out of your code. Based on these uh, factors. The compatibility with your master plan. That's probably one of the biggest factors and we'll get to the case law about that in a little bit. But that's one of the biggest factors is, is, is it consistent with your master plan? Is it consistent with your surrounding zoning districts? Surrounding uses in the area? And then the, always the catch-all, health and safety of the general public. And then the protection and preservation of property rights. That's when you're going from one zoning district to another. And, and so these, these, again, like, like we went to that main purpose when we were talking about zoning changes. These are the items that should be direct, you know, you should be really considering when you're, when you're making your, your motion and voting on them. On a specific use permit, which is the next item. Oops. Again, master plan. Are we consistent with the master plan? Is, is it compatible with the site zoning? Uh, is it compatible with surrounding zoning and other uses? And then the favorite catch-all, protection and preservation of property. Yes, sir.
How far is surrounding go? This entire city?
That's, that's undefined.
Undefined.
Yes.
So it's for interpretation of the commission?
Uh, it is, there's some, there's going to be some interpretation that's, that's done, yes. Right. Cause, and, and, and obviously, different uses have different impacts, right?
Right.
So if you were going to, if, if you're going to uh, offer a specific use permit in a, uh, in a residential district, I'll just use an extreme example. And you wanted a, a auto manufacturing plant in there, well, that's gonna have ripple effects over a, a much wider swath.
Right.
Than if you were just gonna go from a residential uh, to a daycare. Right? So it's, so surrounding, there is no bright line test because the impacts, because the impacts of the use are gonna, are, are important in making your decision. Not all, not all uses are created equal, is the easiest way to say that. Does that make sense? What the council wants to see in your, by ordinance is uh, a report and what the results of the report were. Back to your point, if y'all want additional information to provide them, that's obviously something that, that can be done. But at a minimum, this is what the council wants. In your code also, there's a, there's a, uh, update the master plan every four years. There's a provision in there for P and Z to take a look at that periodically. I don't know, uh, I don't know where y'all are at on that. Um, uh, or if that's even coming up, if that's even part of the plan this year or not. I'm not, I'm just not sure. That's just what's in your, that's just what's in your code.
But as, as being a commissioner, we should be well-versed on the master plan, right? We should know about all the different districts and what the goals are.
Right, and, and it's probably, yeah, you, there's, you're, you're, it's, you're probably-
No caller, I'm so sorry.
That's fine. Uh, you, you probably know of it as a comprehensive plan is what it's generally called. Um, but yeah, there should be, and uh, there should be a master plan.
We do have one and, and I think it's in our folders. I think we all got the, the folder, but it's pretty, it's pretty thick. Uh, so, but I, I know that that's one of the first things I did, so it, uh, it's, it's a really good guidance to exactly, you know, what, the difference within each neighborhood or district and what the goals were.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, that, that, that again is a, is a guiding, it's a guiding document for y'all. Cause council's approved that, right? So that, it's a, much like chapter fifteen is a guiding principle for y'all. The master plan or the comprehensive plan, comp plan is a guiding principle for y'all to take a look at and should, and should assist y'all as y'all are making your decisions on, uh, that come before you. Yes, ma'am.
Can alternates get this kind of resource too? I didn't get any, anything. I mean-
I'll make sure you get it. Um, I wasn't here when you started, but, but if you don't have it, we can get you.
I, I would like the reference so I can be as informed as possible because I think the thing about being an alternate is you never know when you're gonna have to step in and, and be a voting member. And so you should have the same, you know, background and information that, that everybody else does.
And it is online too. Uh, so you can go to Leon Valley and the master plan is there too. You can click on it and it's, uh, and the whole thing is there.
All our documents, all our adopted documents are on there.
Yeah.
Do you have any, excuse me? Do you have any? Do you have any, excuse me, do you have any idea that the master plan is up for renewal at this time?
At, at this current time, it is not, but it, it is, uh, something that needs to get done.
That's quite a process. It takes almost a year or more to get through all of that.
Yeah.
May I ask when it was last adopted?
Seven years ago.
Okay, there you go.
Okay. I had a, a question. I wonder, uh, if Mr. Martinez knows, wasn't there a discussion about re-doing the master plan most recently, like within the last year?
That is true, and we put it off. Uh, it's something that needs to be done, but we've put it off.
Mr. Martinez, did you all put it off to a certain date, or just indefinitely?
Indefinitely.
That's not something that's unusual. It, it usually goes way past the four-year mark before. It gets to the point, it gets almost rotten, and you have to take care of it.
Well, there, there, there is a lot of monetary, uh, costs in redoing the master plan. And, uh, our budget is, we've had to really tighten the belt, and, uh, even had to drill a couple extra holes and tightened even more. So, uh, we have a very tight budget.
And that's not uncommon. I mean, and it's, right, it's, it's just not uncommon for that to occur.
So I have a question. So then where did that update master plan every four years come from? Is that something that should be wiped off, or maybe changed to where-
That, that's up to the council to consider.
Okay.
But that isn't, that, that is in that chapter.
Does the guidance come from state on that?
No, no, sir.
No state guidance?
No, sir, that's, that's just in your ordinance. And I'm, and I'm assuming, I mean, I, I don't know if you pass the, the, the zoning ordinance, but a lot of that stuff is aspirational. They want, they want that in there just so that, you know, we can continue to, to do that. And sometimes there's no changes after four years. Council takes a look at it and says, we're not making any changes, um, on it.
And isn't it true, I've, I've learned that, um, um, some cities, uh, don't even have it. They, they have, they'll call it a master plan, or a city plan, but, and they're all different. They, ours is pretty comprehensive, but I've seen others that it's not even half as good as ours, so it's-
I've seen comprehensive plans.
Yeah.
That is just a map. I mean, you chuckle, but it's true.
Yeah, I know, I know exactly, I've seen that.
I mean, it, it's just a map. Y'all are very fortunate, y'all have a very good comp plan.
Yep.
Um, and, 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 and council has, you know, Councilman Martinez is right, these things cost a lot of money to get the, to get the, uh, well, a lot of times an outside planner comes in and assists with that too. And the, and they cost quite a bit of money. So the fact that y'all have a good comprehensive plan is something y'all should feel fortunate to have in.
So we're kind of off the hook, and so council says we need to do it, is that what you're telling us?
The directive would come from council, yeah.
Your, your term is better than off the hook.
Um, next is, do you want to have anything to add, or? Okay, next is, uh, uh, remember, y'all have jurisdiction, there's the, the, um, and it's important that as a, as a commission, y'all don't exceed the jurisdiction. What that means is, we've got a governing state law implemented in local ordinances, and we don't want to expand beyond that. Very frequently, it's, um, you know, uh, some commissions, and I've seen this happen in other communities that we represent, will have a zoning case, and then, uh, you know, they want something else added to it. You know, there's something, there's something that's completely unrelated, but they believe it's impactful, and they want to do it. Well, it goes beyond the, goes beyond the case that's in front of them, and it can't be done. And we'll talk about jurisdiction here in a little bit. This is where y'all's jurisdiction extends in that code, is into the applicable districts and uses, parking regulations and landscaping, and then there's some other appendices to there, which are in your code for y'all to take a look at, overlay districts, and that kind of thing. So for in, so for instance, building codes, and what building code is appropriate for y'all? I would love some water, um.
Would you like a mint, sir?
No, I'm good, thank you.
You're good?
You won't be able to hear, understand me. Uh, so for instance, building codes, y'all want, you know, y'all want to go back to the Southern Building Code as opposed to the International Building Code. And that's not within y'all's purview to do that. That's, that's something that the commission is, I mean, the, the city council has decided. Thank you so much, Councilman, I appreciate it. So, so we need to really limit and this, and think about what's in that code, how it's impact, how that, how your application is impacting these provisions, and then make our decisions based on that, without adding in additional ancillary items on it. I've got, you know, there's other, I'll give you an example. In another community, there was a, um, uh, they were having problems with grackles, you know, grackles in this one particular area. And so they wanted, in a zoning case, to be able to do something, and, uh, I mean, I won't get into specifics, but do something about the grackles. Well, that's not, I mean, the grackles is not something that's within the, the, the jurisdiction of the P and Z. We had to, and we had to talk to them about, look, this is, you know, you can't deny it because you don't like grackles, you know? Um, you gotta, you, you gotta look at basically the four corners of that paper and make your decision on that basis, okay? We're gonna get into a little bit of constitutional law here. Fourteenth Amendment provides, we can't deny people life, liberty, or property without due process of law. And we can't deny people the equal protection of the law. Basically, we're trying to treat all people similarly situated in the same manner, not only in the application of the law, but in the process that we, that, that, that we get there. So, I'll give y'all some examples. A city refuses to rezone land for multifamily, government subsidized housing, it zones single family. Oh, excuse me, one second. Maybe that'd be great.
Illustration, a municipality refuses to rezone land for a multifamily, government subsidized housing project. The project site is zoned single family, but located in an area which is zoned and developed for multifamily use. The municipality has usually granted rezoning to multifamily use in this case, in this type of an area. The illustration raises the issue of exclusionary zoning and equal protection. Now, you can tell us how.
So what this illustrates is your decisions have impact, and it has precedent, okay? Even though there's no two properties that are exactly the same. You need to think about how, how the, the decisions you make today are going to impact a, a project in the future. Yes, ma'am.
Is this because, um, because it is like, um, equal access? But in, in this case, it's, um, a project, where, where, like, it says it was a zone for single family, but equal access is for multifamily use. So it's in, but it's actually referring to-
Here's the, here is, um, here's the issue, okay? Y'all regularly, and I'm not saying y'all, I'm just saying a city regularly grants a zoning from single family to multifamily apartment com- let's just say apartment complexes. This one, the only difference is that, that it's government-backed, multifamily. What's the difference in the use? Okay? The only, there's no difference in use. There's gonna be difference in how much rent these people pay for that, but there's no difference in use. That's why we want to be careful.
Okay, but that's because of the government subsidized housing, but why are we talking about developers? That in this case, they're seeking, uh, to switch it so they could just build more houses.
You're talking about a plating issue, not necessarily a use issue.
Okay.
So there, so there, there might be some differences there.
Yeah.
Okay? This is, these are all just use-type issues, okay? So on a plating issue, if they're requiring some variances, that's obviously something that y'all can take a look at on a variance way, but not on a use-type basis.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, so when necessary, find a fourteenth.
Yes, sir.
Is the, the issue that the people who own the single-family location are trying to change it to multifamily with government subsidized housing pro- as a government housing, housing project? And that's the question?
In this example, yes.
That's the question.
In this example, yes.
And so if you deny that, you're denying these people their rights. Is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying we would obviously defend the city in whatever manner they chose to do it. What I'm saying is that you open yourself up to a potential Fourteenth Amendment argument on not e- in equal treatment of different, and, and that can be for, that, this is broad strokes, okay? Every, this is not to tell y'all that you have to do everything the same way every single time, okay? This is just an illustration, okay? Facts are gonna, are gonna be very important when coming up with these types of things, okay? So, this is not, I'm not drawing any bright line tests for y'all. I'm just kidding for y'all, just think about how your, how your decisions might impact something in the future. Did you have a question?
I did have a question. I know this is an illustration, and you mentioned the fact that it is a government subsidized housing project. Does that information have to be told to us when it's first being brought to our attention? Or is this something that is not, I mean, has this happened in the past where we approve something, you know, for multifamily apartments, and then eventually it becomes a government subsidized? Because, you know, I, I don't know about you guys, but I think about that a lot of times. Will this eventually become a government subsidized project?
I, I will answer the question, is that sometimes you're gonna know, and sometimes you're not, okay? The develop, the applicant may choose not to tell you. But I do know that, well, I'm not gonna say that I do know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not a housing attorney, but I've been around long enough to know that on some section eight housing, there are some public notices that are necessary at times. That's how information gets out, okay? Um, and then potentially could be a political issue at that point.
If you're talking about a government subsidized housing, you're talking about a way of financing project, right?
Uh, no, I, this was just an example.
What I mean in this example-
I, I, I was not adding any facts to that.
I understand that, but this, this project is subsidized by a government subsidized housing. That's how it's being, that's how it's being built. Okay, did we look at other ways that projects are financed? Is that our purview?
I really didn't understand it to be that, about the financing of the project. I thought of government subsidy of perhaps the renter. So I sense that this might mean persons of lower econ- socioeconomic status.
I'm not adding facts, these are just ver- like, again, very high-level, thirty thousand-foot examples, just to make y'all think of where potentially-
Yes.
Your decisions have impact on other projects in it. Will somebody read the second illustration for me?
I shall read it since my mask is off already. Illustration, a homeowner in a single-family neighborhood files an application for a special use permit for an adult's daycare. At the public hearing, the entire neighborhood speaks against the request, although they have not objected to a daycare for children on the same street. The city council denies the request based on neighborhood opposition and concerns about the safety of their children. This raises the issue of equal protection. What are the differences between daycare for children and daycare for adults? Are adults more noisy? Do they require more room? Is there greater traffic generation?
Good questions, and one that we're not gonna answer here today. Just, these are just things to make you think. What y'all are doing is you're thinking about uses, okay? What uses are the same? What uses are different? And how are they different, quite frankly? So the, you know, so if, in this, in this specific example, again, we're not saying that there is a Fourteenth Amendment issue. We're just saying that one might be raised in that circumstance.
My concern would be, um, is how it's perceived, because someone might bring, one of the commissioners might bring it up that, um, I'm concerned that this might be a Fourteenth Amendment issue, and then someone else say, no, it's not, we can go ahead and move on this. So how do we, how do we consolidate that? You know, because someone just might say it's not.
Right, I mean, and generally, you can, you'll have council that, that can assist you on that if there's, there are specific issues on that.
Or that could be a note.
Sorry.
Or maybe we could, uh, include that as a note.
Right.
The concern for that, okay.
It could be that more information is needed, or it could be tabled, or it could be voted, and a motion made and voted on.
Right, and Councilman was just saying, you could always choose to table it and ask for legal opinion on it as well. So, remember, what did I tell y'all was an important part of your consideration, right? The comprehensive plan, right?
At the beginning.
The number, the number one on both of those was the comprehensive plan. Cases are all over the place on it. San Marcos did it, and the court said, "A comprehensive plan shall not constitute zoning regulations or establish zoning district bounds." Meaning, there was discretion on the planning and zoning to make a change in their, in their zoning map. Excuse me. However, in Laredo, court said, "City did not rezone in accordance with its comprehensive plan. Therefore, the ordinance to rezone was void at the time that y'all made the decision." Two seemingly similar cases, diametrically opposed court decisions on it, right? So our rule of thumb and our advice is that if it's shown in the comp plan, the city's decision on the zoning case is discretionary. If the use is not shown on the comp plan, you should amend the plan or deny it. That's the most conservative advice. Again, that's advice, y'all are the ones that make the decision. Y'all may choose to still approve it. And, and then that's up to someone in the public as to whether they want to challenge- And, and then that's up to someone in the public as to whether they want to challenge that or not.
So what you're saying is that this issue, this was not even addressed in the plan? The issue that you were discussing here was not even addressed in the Laredo plan? Is that what, that what happened?
The, uh, it was saying that what they rezoned it to, to light industrial, uh, was inconsistent with the residential buffer areas that were contained in the comprehensive plan, yes. The comp plan was different than what they ultimately rezoned it to.
So they were outside, outside the bounds of the comp plan?
Right.
So to speak, okay.
Could that lead to legal action?
Right, normally, normally if, normally if there's a decision made, and again, y'all are an advisory body, council makes the final decision.
Okay.
Either the applicant, if he's not happy with the decision the council makes, can bring an action if he believes he's aggrieved, uh, on the decision, and then potentially, property owners that believe that they're aggrieved by an action might be able to bring an action against that.
Secondary effects of proposed use. Decisions on zoning applications should be made based on an analysis of the impact of the proposed use on the neighborhood and on the city as a whole. Such factors include traffic impacts, noise, light, air, crime, and the facilitation of the adequate provision of water, sewers, schools, parks, and other requirements. See Section two point eleven zero zero four of the Texas Local Government Code. Just consider the use, not the user.
So getting back to our illustration earlier about government subsidized housing, you know, the use is what's, is what y'all are considering. Considering the changes from one to another use, considering a specific use permit uh, in, in an area, the, the user shouldn't matter, okay? And it shouldn't matter in two perspectives. One, from an equal protection standard aspect. And two, the user of that property is not gonna own that property forever. They're gonna, they're gonna sell the property and then you can have a different user in there. So the applicant is not always the most relevant factor. It shouldn't be a factor in making your decision as to what y'all, what y'all are going to do.
Well, my concern is when these issues have been brought up, not just here, but in other places, the, sometimes the response has been, well, that's just reality. You're gonna have to deal with it. There's noise, there's light, and there's crime. So it's almost minimized, like these issues.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because I have heard that. Well, that's just the, that's just reality. You can't live in a, you know, in the type of neighborhood that you used to live in. This is now.
Are you asking me a question, or?
Yes, so how do we deal when, when, if there's secondary effects, then the relevance that, that?
That's a factor you're gonna have to determine in granting or denying the application.
Pardon?
Those are factors you're going to have to consider in approving or denying the application.
Okay. I guess because he, because it doesn't really have any teeth to it, you know, so it's stated. But it can be bypassed, or it can be overlooked, or it can be minimized, even though it's a, uh, code.
Every case is gonna be different with respect to those. Yes, sir.
Seems to me that the last few words, "There are other public requirements," creates a situation of great latitude. Am I looking at that wrong?
Are you, are you asking me whether other public requirements is specific?
It specifies water, sewer, schools, parks, and, and it says other public requirements. That expands it to the entire city, I would guess, right?
Potentially, yes.
Well, that could involve like infrastructure, too, right? The need to.
Water, sewer, or infrastructure, yeah.
But I don't, I don't think this, this, uh, example of secondary effects is taken verbatim from the code. So I think that is a general statement. Depending on the city that's involved in this, they may have other public requirements. I don't think this is stating from the code. It's a, it says referred to the Texas Local Government Code, but the other public requirements is just the way the author is saying there may be more than water, sewer, schools, parks.
Exactly.
But, but it's, it's dependent on the city and the circumstance that's being looked at that they may have very specific other local requirements.
Yes, here's what the code says. That zoning regulations, I'm sorry.
And, and I, if I may interject, I know at one of our meetings that we had, I specifically asked the question with all these new subdivisions coming up, do we have enough schools? Because that was my concern is, you know, you know, they're, they're, they're trying to sell this to young families with children. And I was told that, yes, the schools, Northside gets involved right away, and they make sure that they have enough schools for the new subdivision, the new people coming in. But I, I do recall asking that question. That was a few, few months ago, mm-hmm, last year.
And they do make, Northside District especially, they make adjustments, I don't know, annually, probably, on attendance zones? Because you're always seeing in the paper that, that this, this is a new zone, and people are going over here and over here.
Right. That's it. Questions?
Will this be up on the website and for us to look at on our own?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yes, it is, uh, we missed a few minutes of it, but most of it got recorded.
I was thinking about the actual PowerPoint, if it could be as power, if it could be placed on the.
Yeah, the, I, I will put the PowerPoint up or we'll send it out to y'all. Um, it will be good, uh, for this, uh, the meeting tonight, we had some technical difficulties. I don't know if it'll be actually recorded, I'm surprised. Um, so I bear minimum of the PowerPoint will be made available.
It'll be good because it's pretty clear and concise, and it's good guidance. And then that with the book, uh, is, is super, it relieves a lot of anxiety.
Again, I'm glad, that was kind of the goal. Yes, sir.
I would like to see it, receive a printed copy for everybody. So where you, like you say, you can sit down and look it over.
Uh, I think, um, before you invited us to just let them know who wants printed and who wants to use the internet, and that way they could afford us the pop, the paper if, if we want it. And if we don't want it, they don't, you know, they don't want to just send it if we're not gonna use it.
Whoever wants to email me and let me know they want a printed copy, I'll give you a printed copy. If not, I'll forward the electronic copy.
Thank you.
But, but this book, you're gonna see that everybody has this book.
Yes.
All right, that's, that's the end of my presentation, folks.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You were talking about going to having motions, the way we do motions. Uh, that's covered in, uh, Section fifteen point oh two, point seven two one, um, under the heading of motions under Q.
Yes, sir.
Motions, and it, it tells, illustrates that we're supposed to make motions in a certain manner. That's what you were talking about, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. By the way, it leaves us out of the problem of having questions based on frivolous inclusions?
I'm sorry, say that again?
It would, it gives guidance on how we should make motions so that we'll go to the city council in a proper manner, not with some extra.
Right, correct, and, yes, and when you make it in, um, when you make your motions as specific as, that are in the ordinance, it does assist with defense of them later, if anything were ever to be challenged in court. It does, that, that sort of thing does make it easier to defend them later.
On previous councils that I served on, this was a requirement. This is the way we were instructed to make our motions, and we, we were required to do that.
I'm happy to say that I think most of our motions have been done this way. I don't think we've sent, you know, voted, not passed a motion, and it went on to the council. I don't think anything has happened like that. But it's nice to think of it, you know, objectively, like looking at it from the outside.
Yeah.
And just looking at what our product is supposed to be.
But we did need practice on how to state them, because I, I noticed that, well, how do I say this? Or how, how is it supposed to be stated so it's clear on how we're gonna vote on something? So that we do need practice on.
Again, I apologize for my, my voice. Uh, it, uh, it was fine this morning. I don't know what's going on. Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn?
So I'm calling, okay.
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second?
I second it if you need one.
Are we out, are we, have we been called to the chair as part of the?
I second. Okay, I second, heard the seconding of the motion. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion is passed. We adjourn the meeting at seven twenty.
Do what? I can't hear you, man. Yeah, I told you, I told, uh. I told Mr. Ruby.